There are no secrets, lifesavers. Oh, hi, everybody. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to begin today by discussing the thousands of people who have fled their home countries for asylum in hours and have arrived here in our city. As we continue to count the increasing number of people arriving here and how to respond, I think it's important that we ground ourselves in a foundation of humanity. There are indications that the human faces and lives behind this crisis are being lost in the discussion, and we cannot allow that to occur. These are individuals and families, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, and daughters, and sons, and let us not lose sight of the people and the impact all of this has had on them. Consistent with our values, New York City has accepted and welcomed those seeking asylum with open arms in response to inhumane conditions and acts before they ever got here. As a council, we fully understand the gravity of this crisis facing our city and the families who have already suffered so much in their journeys here. We also understand this is challenging and that there are no easy solutions. In a crisis, we don't expect to get everything right and know that mistakes will be made. What's important, however, is how we respond and that we treat people with the compassion and human decency that they deserve. Several of us in the council raised concerns with the administration's plan plans to build a humanitarian emergency relief and recovery center, or HERC, first in Orchard Beach and now on Randall's Island because of the environmental and health risks it would pose outdoors. We sought to be constructive and solution-oriented partners in offering indoor alternatives for the administration to consider for the purposes of intake and relief services, as well as important policy changes to remove barriers that prevent people from expeditiously moving out of the shelter into permanent housing. A major factor in our city's homeless shelter system being stressed are the counterproductive city policies that slow people's departure from it. By addressing these, we could release some of the pressure on our shelter system, benefiting both New Yorkers, who have long been in shelters, and people seeking asylum. These policies are completely within the city's control to change, and enacting them swiftly would allow more people to begin transitioning out of the shelter system and into permanent housing. Whether it is eliminating the requirement that people remain in the shelter system for 90 days before becoming eligible for the City PEP's rental voucher program, hiring the agency staff in the areas to expedite opportunities for people to leave shelter, or addressing the bureaucratic inefficiencies of the process, there are steps the city can and must take to help address the slow rate at which people can access permanent housing opportunities to leave shelters. The council's only interest is in improving the conditions for New Yorkers and asylum seekers, and we cannot leave solutions on the table. We know that more support is needed from the federal and state governments, and we have echoed those calls with action. Yet, it is important for us to acknowledge the challenges that arise within our control as well and to take steps to alleviate them. Council members continue to welcome people seeking asylum and accept emergency shelters for them in their districts. Other key support services from the city at the community level for these new residents is what has been lacking and must be increased. That is the biggest complaint heard from council members, from schools, and advocates alike, and it has also been the subject of news reports. It is counterproductive to dismiss the gaps that exist and potential ideas that can close them. Instead, what our city needs is a constructive and honest approach where we collaboratively and transparently identify emerging challenges and solutions to them. We hope this can be the approach moving forward because this crisis requires all, all of us, to work together for our city. Part of the reason our city is faced with such high rates of homelessness and a shelter system that is over capacity is that we are also in a dire housing crisis. Our city is not building enough homes, especially affordable and supportive housing for New Yorkers, and that will continue to be a problem unless we confront the housing gaps. It will require the leadership of this body as well as the other side of City Hall. And today, the council will be voting on the Bruckner Boulevard rezoning application, which will produce 348 units of housing, 193 of which are affordable, including 99 units for seniors and 25 units that are set for veterans. That means over half of the apartments in this project are affordable. This application improved tremendously from the time it reached the council. The affordability levels of this project were deepened to offer 35% of the affordable MIH units at the 40% AMI level, roughly $48,000 for a family of three. Additionally, the veterans' housing in this project will be permanently affordable and will be accompanied by social services. There are significant labor agreements in this project. With 32 BG SEIU, Laborers Local 79, and the Carpenters Union, this project also establishes local and MWBE hiring goals. And as part of the 100% affordable building for older adults, there will be a 13,000-square-foot senior center instead of office space. This council is committed to being a part of the solution to the housing crisis by approving sound projects that benefit communities and our entire city. As a former community board chair, I can tell you I understand the importance of prioritizing the concerns of local residents and community input. This can often lead to better projects. We must confront the housing crisis facing our neighborhoods and city with every district contributing to the production of affordable housing. I'm glad that the Bruckner Boulevard rezoning achieves this goal while advancing benefits for local residents, and I want to thank Councilmember Velazquez for her work on this project. I also want to thank our zoning and land use chairs, councilmembers Riley and Salamanca, for their contributions to supporting Councilmember Velazquez and the constructive public process they facilitated in this body on this project. Before we continue, I'd like to take a moment to remember and honor the life of EMS Captain Allison Russo. Captain Russo was a 24-year veteran of the FDNY and a 9/11 first responder who dedicated her life to public service and saving lives. We honor her more than two decades of service to our city and mourn her loss. She will be deeply missed, and the council offers our condolences to her family, to her friends, and the entire FDNY during this difficult time. Let us now take a moment of silence for Captain Allison Russo. Thank you. Now, let's move on to our stated agenda. We will be voting on the following land use items. 2080 McDonald Avenue rezoning will facilitate a new eight-story mixed-use building to include 66 housing units, approximately 22 affordable under MIH, 67 parking spaces, a community facility, and retail space. The council is modifying the application to remove the site south of Avenue S from the rezoning area in Councilmember Yeager's district. Bruckner Sites rezoning, as previously mentioned, will facilitate the development of four new mixed-use buildings. It will include a total of 349 housing units, 98 permanently affordable under MIH, 99 income-restricted units for seniors, including 30 of the permanently affordable units under MIH, and 25 units for veterans, 309 parking spaces, a grocery store, senior center, youth community center, retail, and veterans' services in Councilmember Velazquez's district. 705 10th Avenue DEP Site, a UDAP and tax exemption application to facilitate the development of a new eight-story mixed-use building with approximately 157 affordable housing units, a ground-floor community facility, and an open space area to be operated by the Parks Department in Councilmember Botcher's district. Cambria Heights 222nd and 227th Streets Historic Districts, a Landmarks Preservation Commission's designation of a remarkably cohesive and distinctive group of row houses built with storybook-style features in Councilmember Williams District. 78-46 Metropolitan Avenue rezoning will facilitate the enlargement of an existing one-story building with two additional stories, two housing units, and a veterinary medicine office located on the ground floor in Councilmember Holden's district. 79-18 164th Street rezoning will facilitate a commercial overlay that will legalize an existing medical laboratory in Councilmember Gennaro's district. Finally, 40-25 Crescent Street rezoning will facilitate a new seven-story mixed-use building to include 233 housing units, including approximately 60 affordable apartments under MIH, as well as ground floor, commercial, and industrial space. The council is modifying the application to strike MIH Option 2 and add the deep affordability option in Councilmember Wann's district. Additionally, we will also be voting on the following finance item. Proposed introduction 655A, sponsored by Councilmembers Justin Brandon and Lincoln Wrestler, would authorize an increase in annual expenditures by three business improvement districts: the Fifth Avenue Association, the Columbus Amsterdam Bid, and the Court Livingston Skimmerhorn Bid. Lastly, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation. Introduction 179A, sponsored by Councilmember Francisco Moya, would require the city to publish online a report about the role of women and gender non-binary, non-conforming, and intersex workers in non-traditional careers and submit that report to the council no later than July 1, 2023. Councilmember Moya couldn't join us today, but we thank him for his work on this bill. Finally, we will vote on a package of legislation making childcare more accessible in New York City. From day one, childcare has been a priority for this council. We want to pursue it on a universal basis for working families across our city in partnership with the mayor and other stakeholders. I'm a mother and grandmother with experiences as a working parent of young children, and many of our members share the same experiences. Affordable, high-quality childcare benefits parents, children, and our city overall. Childcare is one of the biggest challenges for working women, and our country is facing a childcare crisis exacerbated by the pandemic and its economic consequences. Women experienced some of the greatest job losses from COVID, and the cost of care has only been increasing. There are approximately 225,000 more men in the labor force than before the pandemic, but 427,000 fewer women. There has been a decline in the childcare workforce that remains a challenge. Childcare must be a priority to help ensure an equitable recovery. Through this package of legislation, this historic women-majority city council is once again taking action to lead, demonstrating the difference for our city when our legislature accurately reflects our city. We continue to prioritize inclusive solutions that address the issues of greatest importance to all New Yorkers. Introduction 242A, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require the creation of a Marshall Plan for Moms Task Force to study and develop recommendations on how to support working mothers and caregivers. The task force would be required to submit a report with recommendations within one year of the task force's convening. I now invite Councilmember Gutierrez to come to the podium and speak on her legislation. You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for your leadership. I'm getting comfortable up here in these states as well. We pass legislation so often. New York City is in the midst of a childcare crisis, which means that women and caregivers are experiencing an economic crisis. Women who leave the workforce to care for their children will lose more than $480,000 in their lifetime, which is not only money that families desperately need, but money that New York City's economy needs to recover. The Marshall Plan for Moms Task Force, Intro 242, will develop and issue recommendations on how New York City can support working mothers, parents, and caregivers, and is based on the Marshall Plan for Moms movement founded by Rashma Sehwani. The Marshall Plan for Moms calls for historic investment in caregivers' economic recovery and empowerment, especially against the backdrop of the pandemic's impact on mothers and working caregivers. The Marshall Plan for Moms uses an economic lens to address the issue of childcare, which has long been dismissed as a women's issue, and acknowledges the transformational impact that real investments could have for millions of families in our city. This task force and the other task force and advisory board in this package of bills from Councilmembers Hudson and Councilmember Menon are signals that it is time to join forces to think through how we can revolutionize the economy of care, supporting not just the half a million children under five years of age in our city, but the providers of that care as well, which is a workforce that is predominantly women, women of color, and immigrant women. I am also proud to stand in support of the other bills in the package from my colleagues, Councilmember Julie Menon, which takes important steps to clear the way for a more transparent system. This is just the beginning of a long fight toward a vision of true universal childcare in which no one falls off a benefits cliff, no one is stuck in a cycle of poverty, no one is taking out personal loans to make payroll, and no one, no child, no parent, and no provider is left behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Introduction 477A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would establish a childcare task force to examine how to make childcare more affordable and accessible for families in the city and how to provide additional support and funding to childcare providers and workers. The task force would be required to submit a report that includes recommendations for making childcare in the city more affordable and accessible, and I invite Councilmember Hudson to come forward and say a few words about her important legislation.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker Adams. Today, I'm proud to join my colleagues in passing a groundbreaking legislative package that will pave the way toward universal childcare in New York City and make our city the first in the nation to provide childcare to all who need it. As we know all too well, the pandemic turned back the clock for many women in the workforce. Many women saw their jobs among the 1 million erased by the pandemic. Though many of these jobs came back, many recent parents tried to re-enter the workforce but found their wages too low to pay for adequate childcare and decided instead to stay at home. Many of these women were pushed out of the workforce during their peak earning years and are still fighting to find a job at their previous salary when they take temporary leave to start or grow a family, further entrenching the gender wage gap. These trends began before the pandemic and have persisted. We need to ensure parents do not have to choose between their families and their careers. Universal childcare is the way to make this happen. As part of my Black Agenda for New York City, I called for a universal childcare system in New York City, and I'm proud to have delivered on that promise by sponsoring this package and introducing a bill to create a task force that will study how to make childcare more affordable through free or low-cost childcare. This package is just the start. Rather than cutting resources for early childhood education, we need to continue to fight for universal 3K and expand the program to bring early childhood education to all New Yorkers. We need to raise wages and training for childcare workers to create a pipeline of good-paying jobs to care for our city's children. And we need to continue working to ensure women, femmes, and non-binary folks earn $1 for every dollar a man earns. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hudson. We will also vote on the following resolution and bill sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon. Introduction 485A would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to coordinate with the Department of Information Technology and Telecommunications to create a directory of childcare programs in the city, including a link to information about child daycares run by the state that are located in the city. The directory would be available in the designated citywide languages. Introduction 486A would establish a childcare advisory board, which would be responsible for conducting studies and issuing reports related to childcare in the city, including providing an annual assessment of the needs of childcare programs in the city and the city's progress towards providing universal childcare. Introduction 487A would require the administration to create an online portal that provides information on childcare subsidies. The portal would allow a user to access information about subsidies, including eligibility requirements and instructions on how to apply based on information provided by the user. The portal would also include the forms needed to apply for each subsidy, including any electronic forms available that may be submitted online through the portal. The portal would be available in the designated citywide languages. Introduction 488A would require the administration to create a childcare grant pilot program for childcare programs in the city in need of assistance. To be eligible, a childcare program would need to be at significant risk of closure or displacement and meet application and other requirements established by administering agency. The administration would be required to submit an annual report to the mayor and the speaker of the council on grants awarded pursuant to the program and recommendations for expansion. Introduction 489A would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to develop guidance for owners of real property regarding the facility requirements for a childcare program and make such guidance available on its website. The guidance would also be required to indicate that property owners may be eligible for a tax abatement if they meet certain requirements pursuant to state law. Resolution 69 would call upon the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign legislation supporting the provision of financial assistance to families and childcare providers to make childcare more accessible and affordable. And before Councilmember Menon comes forward, I just want to say for this specific package of bills, very, very personal to me as a former member of an advisory board for a childcare center and one who has taught to the CDA credential for childcare providers, it is essential that we continue to protect and support our childcare providers and all provision for childcare. And I congratulate and salute you, Councilmember Menon. Please come forward and speak about your bills.
Thank you so much, Speaker. I really want to congratulate and thank Speaker Adams for her leadership in putting forward this package. It is going to get us to universal childcare. I want to congratulate my colleagues, Councilmember Hudson, Councilmember Gutierrez, on their bills and everything they have done. This package is incredible, and it's really a momentous day for the council. So you've heard, obviously, that childcare is in crisis. On average, parents in New York City and caregivers are spending over $18,000 a year on childcare. During the COVID pandemic, it's estimated that over 375,000 parents either had to leave the workforce or downsize their job simply because they could not find affordable or accessible childcare. And that has an economic impact for the city. It actually costs the city over $2 billion in lost revenues for those parents and caregivers that had to leave the workforce. Moreover, we have a supply issue. The demand is very high for childcare. We have 17 childcare deserts throughout the city, and yet 1,400 childcare facilities have closed in recent years. Childcare is both unaffordable and, quite frankly, inaccessible for the vast majority of New Yorkers. And like the Speaker, I'm also a mom. I'm a mom of four, so it's a very personal issue to me and for so many families across the city of New York. Today, this would make New York City the first city in the country to implement a universal childcare program. We will, with this package, go farther than any other city has done, and that is really, I think, a testament to the Speaker, to a woman-majority council, and it's really such an exciting moment for us. Very briefly, as the Speaker said, my five bills would mandate a permanent childcare advisory board that would, within five years, implement universal childcare. A second bill would provide grants to struggling providers, which gets to the supply side issue. A third would make it easier to open new childcare centers by providing the state's tax abatements up to $225,000. And the fourth would be a comprehensive childcare directory in 11 different languages so parents and caregivers could find a facility. And then lastly, as the Speaker said, a subsidy database that connects parents and caregivers directly with federal, state, and city subsidies that are available. So I'm thrilled today that we will be passing this Universal Childcare Act, and this is a very exciting moment for all of us. Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Menon. Outstanding. That concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we'll take on-topic questions first.
Question on the other items?
Can I ask about the asylum?
The legislation and life insurance?
Sure. If the city is basing a $10 billion budget call, how do we pay for universal childcare?
I'm happy to talk about that. So as I mentioned, the City's Economic Development Corporation did a study that showed we're losing out on over $2 billion on lost revenue. The governor has allocated over $7 billion for the next four years for childcare. The mayor has also allocated funding. If we combine the city, state, and federal funding, we get to $1.7 billion. One of the issues with universal childcare, and the advisory board is very specific about it, it says the first tranche to study is families that are 400% or under the poverty line, which for a family of four is $111,000. So we really need to focus on that first. If we do children 400% of the poverty line or below, from 0 to 3, it would cost $4.3 billion. So we have close to $2 billion that's already been allocated by the state and the city. But yes, we would need to basically allocate additional funding for this, and that's what the bill would mandate.
I guess, so where does the $2 billion come from if they can't fund 3Ks?
So first of all, what the bill does is it says we have to get to universality. It also says that we need to look at the federal, city, and state subsidies and see how we can be more creative about that. We obviously have a funding shortfall, but at the end of the day, because we're losing economic revenue from families that are being pushed out of the workforce, it is a win-win for the city to step up and subsidize this. And I'm sure that they'll be, and the mayor's been very supportive of universal childcare, so we fully expect that the Speaker and the mayor will have those conversations.
I was just curious to go back to your initial comments on asylum seekers. You sent the administration a list of 80 hotels. I was just curious, have you and have your members been welcoming the shelters in their districts? Do you agree with the mayor that because of the emergency nature of this, that there's not time to give notice to your members when these emergency shelters are opening in their districts?
Yeah. Thank you for the question. We have been sharing the hotels. We actually shared them initially with the administration. And the second question to answer that is, yes, certainly, councilmembers have been accepting asylum seekers into our districts. I believe in, you know, leading by example. I have several in my own that I've accepted over the past two months. The notice has been slight, but the notice is also slight as we recognize slight notice as the buses are coming into the city as well. So we understand that as well. So the answer is yes. Thank you.
Back to that question, a call on Joe's. The mayor has, on a couple of occasions, complained about councilmembers not stepping up publicly saying, "We want to help the asylum seekers," but privately telling his administration, "No, we don't have space in the district." Have you spoken with the administration about that and who these councilmembers are? I mean, is there anything you can kind of elucidate on that topic? Because the mayor will only give so much in the form of specifics as far as who he's in fact talking about.
Thank you for the ques-- I'm not privy to any discussions that the mayor may or may not have had with councilmembers, so I can't really address that question in specifics. I can let you know that this topic, this situation, is at the top, the very top of the food chain for the city council right now. And we are looking into policy. We are looking into practices. More specifically, we are looking into how we got here to a crisis in housing and sheltering individuals. And our focus is, with the administration, how do we correct the situation that got us into a crisis to begin with? And that is, how do we loosen up the bureaucracy that keeps individuals in shelter? And now we are busting at the seams in trying to accommodate more folks coming into shelter. But I don't have privy to conversations with the mayor or councilmembers.
One other question on that, the asylum seekers topic. How much notice, if any, did the mayor's side give you about this new HERC that's going to be opening, or do they have a plan for Midtown?
Well, the notice to us was given, I don't know when the decision was made to create the HERC, but the decision, once we got the information before there was any construction, we got the information on both HERCs prior to them being constructed, the thought of Orchard Beach as well as Randall's Island. So in my estimation, we had the information in fairly good time.
I'm talking about the one in Midtown, that the, I think it's the Row Hotel.
The Row Hotel? Oh, the announcement, right. Right, the temporary, yeah, yeah, yeah. We just got information on that, so I can't really expound on that. I'm still looking at that information now as we speak.
Did you just get information on it when the press release went out?
We, I was not privy to this information.
To, I guess, a couple of things. City's management provides services for the folks who have arrived. We did a story on the front page today about how there are something like 100 kids at a single school on the West Side that has one ESL teacher. Is that acceptable, and what can DOE do to fix that? Do we need like credentialing changes from the state? But just broadly, one teacher who can speak Spanish who now has 100 kids?
Yeah, and that is one-- Yeah, and that is one, one of the serious problems with, with an influx of children and no plan for them. The DOE has to get a handle on this. We have to ensure that the children coming into the schools have Spanish-speaking teachers or Spanish-speaking individuals in those schools, interpreters in those schools, and we also have to have the, the, the facilities have to be equipped to handle. The teachers have to have the information, and we recognize that we have heard from teachers that have not had the information that they need in order to handle the situation coming in. So it has to be looked at and it has to be addressed by the DOE immediately.
To follow the questions about the Row Hotel, the city a few months ago released RFP calling for this, a second intake center for the folks coming up from the southern border, plus a bunch of hotel rooms. It was initially supposed to get sited at the Row. They canceled the plan, and then all of a sudden, I guess with very little notice to you, this plan is back on. Does this speak to sort of the helter-skelter nature of the city's response to, to the crisis? I mean, how, what should we read into on again, off again, on again, off again, on again? Let's move in here, let's move in there, and all of a sudden move back?
Yep. Great question, and I think this pretty much points us to the fact that this is something that is unprecedented for this city. There are no roadmaps that we have to follow, and what we are witnessing is handling things as they come. Mistakes are going to be made, as I mentioned, and this is a learning process for the city. We have to work together to create solutions, but understandably so. This is a process in motion. These pieces are moving pieces, you know, every second that we're, that we're dealing with this crisis right now. You know, I, I visited one of the intakes this weekend, or two, this weekend, and I can tell you that it is an ongoing process. It is difficult. New York is going through this without, again, without any roadmaps, so it, it is a difficult, it is a very, very difficult condition that we're in right now.
Do you think the administration's response has been hypothetical, or do you think it's sort of, it's, it feels like it's worse?
Well, I, I can't really speak to that specifically. What I do know is that if we work together, we're going to come up with solutions that can make this process a lot better. Again, this is unprecedented for New York, and we are learning the process as it happens.
Thanks, Ellen. Katie? If I can go back down to the top, and I apologize, I just got a question from a colleague, and it's Bruckner rezoning.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to get your take, Madam Speaker, on where you stand on global council members having to be known on land use matters and the tradition of member deference. I know in this case, the councilwoman sort of flipped her vote on what she was proposing to do, but I just wanted to get your take on that.
Yeah. Yeah, that, thank you, Katie. The, well, the, the issue of member deference is, is still very pertinent in the council. The councilmembers know their districts better than anyone knows their districts. We are, in the city of New York, facing a crisis that we've never seen before when it comes to housing shortages. So decisions have to be made in consideration of the city, of the deficit that the city is under right now, and it is going to be incumbent of all of us to work together to provide the necessary housing within reason for all of our districts. So yes, member deference is certainly alive and well in the city council, and it works hand in hands with the needs of the people of the city.
What if, you know, I know we saw this in the previous administration with the Blood Center rezoning, but what if there's a situation where there is a rezoning that could theoretically benefit the whole city, but the member of that district is opposed to it? I mean, would you encourage the members, the whole body, sort of go against that, or?
Well, it, well, I, I can't answer a hypothetical, but what I can say is that each, each U L R P rezoning, whatever comes up in the district, will be looked at on its own merit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So actually, following up, and we're talking a lot about the housing crisis, and next week, the Adams administration is pushing forward with a City of Yes zoning, that's what it's called, and one of the pieces of the City of Yes is zoning for housing opportunity, which would call for either eliminating or dramatically reducing parking minimum requirements that developers say forces them to build too much parking at the expense of units that could be priced for, et cetera, et cetera. I'm wondering if you had a position on that part of the City of Yes zoning proposal, reducing the parking minimums, which advocates have been calling for?
Well, you know, again, we have to take all of, all the proposals, you know, and weigh them individually. Certainly, everything should be considered. We're a city that is growing. We're growing exponentially now as we speak, so when we take a look at all of these new policies and proposals, everything has to be considered, and the council is certainly considering everything that comes before us.
Well, let me follow up, but in, in some neighborhoods, you know, in your caucus, you've got neighborhoods that are very transit-rich, where in Manhattan, new, new developments don't have any parking at all. In other parts that count, the city areas that are further from transit, a lot of your members might want that mandatory minimum parking to maintain and, and also being increased. So how do you balance that? I mean, it's, it's something that advocates have been saying, this parking is reducing the amount of housing that's being built.
Yeah, you know, again, we are, we're facing, number one, a housing crisis in the city right now, so our focus should really, in my estimation, remain on that. Any proposals forthcoming? We're going to review them when we get the details, and we'll work, work with the proposals as we get them.
Madam Speaker, you know, several times you've said that you want to work together with the Adams administration, yet there have been several cases where, you know, looking at the, thinking of the hotel list, you kind of criticized him publicly for not sending it to him allegedly. You know, there's been other cases. How do you think they are working with you on this so far?
You know, I don't really have any interest in finger pointing, so we work with the administration comfortably. Our staff is in more contact with the administration. The mayor and I consult as well. So, you know, given the situation right now, especially with the asylum seeker situation, understandably tensions are high. Again, this is unprecedented for New York, so we understand that, but I'm not going to stand here and point fingers. I'm just going to get down to the business of helping with solutions with the body.
Thank you, Ellen. Everybody asked a question, so.
I got a question. Is it okay with you that you guys get no notice from the mayor's side on this Midtown HERC?
Is it okay with me?
Yeah.
It's never okay when you get no notice, but given the situation that we're in now and the crisis that we're in now, we certainly understand that things happen.
But if I can, just housing, sort of large housing, the city added seven hundred thousand jobs in the last decade, built a little bit, two hundred thousand units of housing, and since the seventies, the city's never added more than two hundred thousand units of housing in this given decade. Do you think the process is broken, and do you think U L R P and member deference play a role in the breaking of the process?
Oh, that's a great, great question. I think there is no mistake about it that the process is broken. It's something that we have to fix. It is in, going to be incumbent upon this council to do its due diligence when it comes to housing, the people of the city of New York, and helping to lessen that, and working, again, in partnership with the administration. We hope, we hope to lessen the bureaucracy that it takes to build housing in the city.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible].
Oh, of course. Revolution.
[inaudible].
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 [inaudible].